I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, two republics for whose stand we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as one. Thank you, everybody. Let's take a couple of housekeeping things before we open the public hearing. I hope everybody had a good holiday, and let's hope we all have a prosperous and healthy New Year. Let me take this opportunity to introduce our new supervisor, Dave McMillan. Many of you know him, some of you might not at this point. So, Dave?
How are you? Good to see you guys.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I'd like Kelly to explain the somewhat unusual situation that Justin and I are in tonight because of our terms. So, Kelly, Charlie, what are you?
Yes, so basically, the code provides that certain, that planning board members have certain terms, and those terms end on certain dates. Technically, both of your terms will have ended on December 31st. However, the comptroller has weighed in and says that a planning board member may remain in office after the expiration of your term until the town board appoints a successor. So you are allowed to remain as a holdover until the town board holds their first meeting and makes appointments to the planning board.
Okay, thanks, Kelly. So we're, Justin, you are, and I are legal tonight. And then one other thing, there's seven of us tonight. One permanent member, Chris Casker, his term also expired on the 31st. Of course, he's been elected as a councilperson with Dave, and also with Rick Marsh, another new councilperson. So that explains why Chris is not here tonight. He can't serve on both the planning board and the town board at the same time. So that explains his absence. And since we do have a member missing, Justin, who is our alternate, can function as a full member tonight, vote on everything and so on. So, with that being said, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for the West Terrace Tuxedo Farms. A second, if you would, favor.
Aye.
I'll start by asking either Mitch or Brad to give us a description of what the West Terrace in Congress needs. And I'd ask the board members to hold their questions until we get to the, to that section on the regular meeting agenda.
Okay.
Sure.
Go ahead.
So while Mitch is putting these up, and while we're on the point of some procedural clarifications, you all should know that just before the holidays, we sent a letter to the town board noting a change in the name of the project from Tuxedo Farms to Tuxedo Reserve. You remember, that was a prior name of the project, so now it's come back. So Tuxedo Reserve is now the formal name of the project.
All right, good.
Tuxedo Reserve.
Okay, good evening, everybody, and of course, Happy New Year. I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday season. My name is Mitch Newman with Lennar, and my position is Director of Land Acquisition and Entitlements. And in that role, we move ahead with governmental approvals for the community so we can eventually turn it over to construction and sales and start going vertical, as we said. The section of the community that's up for discussion in the public hearing is the West Terrace section. So if you recall, the entire community is close to 1,600 homes with a mixed-use section, which is the Commons, but we're starting the process with West Terrace. And the first question we sometimes get is, why start there? West Terrace is 137 homes. It's a mix of single-family homes and townhomes. And the reason is simply because that's where the community laid up. There's been site development work started here, the roads are cut in, the utilities are partially in, the water tower at the top of the site here is already in. So it lent itself to the best place to start to give us the quickest ability to move forward. So that's why we went ahead with West Terrace. We also appreciate the fact that it's a mix of 40-foot-wide, single-family homes and two different style townhomes. One style is a three-story townhome, the other style is a two-story townhome, which from the builder's perspective gives us a chance to enter the market at three different price points and three different home styles and really get our arms around the community. And then from there, we'll move into other sections, which you'll see as part of our subsequent approval process this spring, whether it's Upland Park or North Ridge, you'll see those come in relatively soon. So we start with West Terrace. As I said, it's 137 homes, 31 single families, which are in this center street, and then there are 72 three-story townhomes and 34 two-story townhomes. The townhomes are all three bedrooms, and the single-family homes are all four bedrooms. Just because this occasionally comes up, I'll mention it. Price point, it's not technically part of the legal presentation, but we're anticipating the single-family homes are in the 800,000s, and the townhomes are somewhere in the high fives to low 600,000s. And that's all subject to market conditions, subject to change, but a lot of people always look for that basic information. There is no specific recreation component in West Terrace, but we have created a walking and sitting area here that'll have some benches and a place for folks to congregate. Obviously, the Commons is where the actual recreation and recreation amenities will happen over time, and you'll see that in the context of the site plan approval and the architectural review approval when we get to the Commons. The road network within West Terrace are private roads to be maintained by the homeowner association. There's also some stormwater basins that will be maintained by the homeowner association. And I think that is where I wanted to go in terms of an overview of the plan. Did you want me to go into the homes, to the architectural review board?
I don't think we need that.
Okay.
At this point, no.
Okay. Anything else that we need to cover, Brad?
Anything to add, or?
No, unless there's specific questions. For the record.
We'll get to the questions. Okay, thanks, Mitch.
Thank you.
There are two members of the public here. Do you have any comments on this?
I don't. I just don't, I love the project, thank you for bringing it to the table, I'm looking forward to moving ahead.
Excellent.
Thank you. Very, very hot blog.
Appreciate it.
I echo exactly what you said. It's been a long process, and it's good to see you. All you hear is talk over all the years, and starting, not starting, is great to see you getting to the fresh.
Okay, hopefully, if any other members of the public were coming, they're not too late. I think it's probably safe to close the public hearing. We don't get much of a turnout for any public hearings, really. Tonight is not the exception. So with that, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
If you would, favor.
Aye.
Okay. So I'll call to order the regular meeting. And the first thing is, I'll ask if any board member have any questions on the minutes from our December 5th meeting. I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second that.
Favor.
Aye.
That's approved. So the first item on the regular agenda is Metro R Services. This is the seven-lot subdivision on Warwick Brook Road. And I'll ask Scott to give us a brief summary of where you stand on that project now.
So, yeah, I'll give you guys a summary. I kind of tried to make a summary for myself of what has kind of occurred since we actually got approval back in May of 2022. So after that, we submitted easement descriptions for review by the town engineer and town attorney in October of 2022. November 1st of 2022, we requested a 180-day extension from the original approval, which we received. On November 4th of 2022, we received comments from Kelly's office on the easement descriptions. In mid-December of 2022, we began discussing with Sean Hoffman and the town about obtaining a clearing, filling, and grading permit. Realistically, we were just doing clearing on the site for trees in the access road for the majority of the subdivision. So this was determined that we needed this. January 3rd, we attended a planning board meeting to request a public hearing for the clearing, filling permit. On February 7th of 2023, we had the planning board grant the clearing, filling, and grading permit, which was signed and certified on February 14th. In early February, we sent updated easement descriptions to the town engineer and attorney for review. February 21st of '23, we performed a site visit with the town building inspector and town engineer to review the flag limits of the trees that would be removed. February 23rd, we received additional comments from Kelly on the descriptions. March 6th of '23, we received the clearing, filling, and grading permit. End of March, roughly the last two weeks of March is when the tree clearing, or I shouldn't say clearing, they were just cut down, they haven't been removed from the property yet. So the trees were cut down at the end of March. June, we sent updated plans and updated SWIP easement descriptions to the town engineer and attorney for review. On August 21st of this year, or sorry, last year, '23, we received an engineering sign-off letter from the town engineer that did note four items that needed to be completed prior to signing. The four items were addressing the planner's memorandum, which she followed up with an email stating that she had no finding comments or comments that had to be addressed prior to signing. Obtaining a conservation easement, which I had discussed a little with Kelly just before the meeting, there's some items that need to be addressed with that. Submitting parking fees for the lots and performance bond for the, for the site. The performance bond was sent to Sean for review on the 19th, and we received a cost estimate sign-off letter, I'm gonna call it, on the 30th. And then October 3rd, 2023, the planning board, the management agreed on the bond amount. So we are, for all intents and purposes, right at the finish line, we just need to extend, or get an extension.
Scott, by the way, is the engineer for the owner.
Yes, sorry. I represent Lincoln Tully, and I'm here for Paul Moore. He's traveling today, and that's why I'm gonna be here, otherwise he would have been.
Do you have any feeling for when you might start on the first lot?
Well, the construction, I would anticipate, would be starting this spring. The biggest design element is going to be the bridge that crosses Warwick Brook. And when, the biggest thing is gonna be when we can get that from the bridge manufacturer, and can we have the site ready when they're ready to deliver it. There's not a lot of room to work on the site, so it's gonna have to kind of go all-in at once, and we don't have a lot of staging areas, so that's kind of our biggest challenge right now, which we're discussing with the, the bridge company when we expect delivery.
So the applicants' requests tonight are for two 180-day extensions of the conditional subdivision approval, which we granted in May of '23. So do we have to do those separately, or can we do them together?
No, you can do them together, and you can do a motion to extend it. That actually counts out to April 26th, but to kick it to your next meeting, it's slightly over the two 180, and that would make it to May 7th. So if you want to do that, you can.
That doesn't create a problem, since it's beyond the 180 days?
No.
Okay. So May 7th?
May 7th.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to grant two 180-days extensions plus to May 7th of '24 for the subdivision approval. And I think you fully know, Scott, that for each site, you have to come back for site plan.
Yeah, you sort of come back for individual site plan approval.
Right. There's no site plan approval in this, it's just the subdivision approval. So, does anybody have any questions about any of this?
Yeah, I have. Is there any limitation on the number of approvals that could be had?
No, not right now. There used to be in town law and in village law, but they did change that, so there's no limitation, so long as the applicant is really still staying on top of it and proceeding and things like that. If they've totally abandoned the project, then I would give you some different advice. But they are, there's no limitation, is the short answer.
Okay. Are those, are those two extensions feasible for the work you need to do?
I believe so. We're, we're close to the end.
Well, one of them is basically retroactive, is bringing it from last May, 180 days, it's a six-month extension, and then they're asking for a six-month extension from there, so then that would bring it to this point.
It's really only like six months from now.
And for the most part, they actually have, I mean, Sean's already written his sign-off letter. The thing that's really holding it up is I haven't written a sign-off letter, and I did just pull it up, there's several easements, and I'll forward you the email, that are outstanding, and I need to make sure that they're modified to my satisfaction, and then I need hard copies so that I can present them to the town board, so then the town board has to take action to authorize the supervisor to sign them, and that's where the holdup is right now.
The overall site plan is on the board up there.
Yeah, nothing has changed since that.
Mr. Chairman, it's okay, can I just add one thing?
Sure.
So the applicants before you this evening for the extension of the subdivision approval, as you know, they did also receive a clearing, filling, and grading permit, and they've done that work. That work, that approval will expire in February, so.
I think in March, but yes.
February or March. If no other work under that permit is contemplated, then you can just let that expire?
Sure.
And we can close that out. However, if there was to be an extension, you would need a public hearing. So if that's the case, I would recommend you request, you know, talk it over with the client if you need it.
I'll review that with Paul, I don't believe we need to extend that though.
All right, so I think I made that motion to grant the two extensions.
Second.
Second, if you would, favor.
Aye.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you very much.
Don't forget to draw.
You don't want it?
Sure, okay.
Deborah's like, no, we won't.
We have enough tax dollars.
Okay, the next, the next item is Tuxedo Reserve, the West Terrace. So why don't we go directly to the consultant's reports?
I think you started while I was calving, settles in.
Yeah, why don't you start? You must have gotten hung up on it through.
I apologize, I actually drove past the exit through my. Oh, it's true. I was talking to my husband, and I drove right, and I was like, oh, so I apologize.
That's no problem. Is it cleared up, the accident?
No, there was no accident. It was, it was clear, yeah.
Okay, Sean.
So again, this is West Terrace subdivision site plan and ARB approval. I think Kelly has some information that you requested relative to ARB approval. Sorry, my cheek's gonna discuss this evening, but I just wanted to bring your attention that this was initially considered during the November meeting. At that time, I had submitted a written report to the board and reviewed those comments at that time. The applicant, the plans for the public hearing this evening are on those same plans that you considered in November. However, you may recall the applicant submitted some additional plans in December, and my understanding is those additional plans, which aren't subject to your meeting this evening, was attempted by the applicant in hopes of getting a jump on the schedule. If there's no public comment or no significant comment tonight that they haven't heard before, I think they're gonna be requesting a new, a special meeting, and perhaps a resolution of approval in that regard. I just wanted to clarify the, the two different plan submissions, and which one you're considering this evening.
From here on tonight, it'll be the new plans that they'll be presenting.
But if I can clarify, I appreciate the distinction, but even like the initial submission compared to the revised plan, really technical revision that most of us wouldn't even frankly pick up on, the layout that you see is essentially the same. Same unit, same layout, same.
Maybe when I throw it back to you, you can just highlight what those changes might be.
And he's gonna punch right over the baton. The baton's going this way.
I don't care who does it.
I don't have anything further because of that, relative to my comments that involve you.
Thanks, Sean.
So we actually did look at the new comments, I mean, the new submissions, and so our comments that we provided to the applicant are based on those new submissions, really just trying again just to make sure that they're addressing our comments. And for the most part, all our comments have been addressed, and we just have some landscaping comments, which are gonna be forthcoming later on this week on the, the new submission. So again, as both Sean and Brad have mentioned, that the submissions are really more technical at this, at this nature, and so our comments really just dealt with some, a couple amendments still outstanding dealing with parking and a couple other things dealing with like the overall trackers that they've submitted and landscaping. So it's minor at this point in technical.
Good, thanks, Valerie. Kelly?
Well, I really issued memos, but I did issue a very lengthy memo to the board addressing some of the concerns that the board members had raised. I don't know, I obviously it's lengthy, so I don't really wanna go through the whole thing, but I don't know if anybody had any, any questions on it. And just so the applicant knows, it was relating to this board's role as the ARB and the planning board has set forth in all of the guideline documents and the special permit.
And the bottom line is that we are quite limited from an ARB perspective.
Yes, it's.
Is that a fair statement?
That is a very fair statement, that really your role is just to determine compliance with, with the town board after you approve.
Okay, I have some questions. So I understand, from the ARB perspective, we're limited to checking for compliance with the architectural standards and the smart code, but we still have a normal site plan review process.
You do have a normal, I wouldn't say it's a normal site plan review process. The special permit did approve essential layouts and things like that, locations and hierarchy of roads.
Yeah.
So again, you're, you have less leeway as the ARB and a little bit more as the planning board, but again, it's so much more restrictive from what you're used to. Like on Metro R compared to even just this West Terrace, vastly different. But I did try, again, it was an attorney-client privileged memo, so I'm trying not to say too much about it to the applicant, but I did try and take pretty much every provision that related to both ARB and planning board from all of those documents that were approved by the town board and put them into one, so that, yes, you need to look at the other documents in terms of pictures and colors and things like that, but your role and your authority is all in this one document, so you don't need to jump back and forth, because I jumped back and forth a lot through all of those appendices attached to the special permit.
What's it gonna be?
All right. But, but so hopefully, it's a little bit more condensed for the board to review.
It was, it was very helpful, I appreciate it.
Yes, very, thank you.
Thank you.
Unfortunate, but helpful.
I just wish there was more boards that can talk to each other, like have a joint board meeting, so I can, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it started, it really started many, many years, many, many years ago, and it's just been modified over the years, and obviously, 2022 was accumulation of all of that, but that, I would say, probably after 20 years to start talking those blogs.
Brad or Mitch, you just wanna highlight the major changes between the earlier version and this version?
On the architectural, you're talking about now?
Or if anything else has changed of significance.
Well, so why don't we get Chuck, and he'll go through the engineering changes that was, that are minor or technical, and then I can also follow up on the homes right after him.
Good evening, for the record, Charles Utchik with Lang and Engineering. This could literally be about 60 seconds of a presentation, because for all intents and purposes of the 100-plus comments, I'd say 95 of them were really technical in nature. For example, we were asked to provide additional snow storage area, which is represented on the plan along the shoulders and where we had areas to put it. There was a question about the safety zone between the edge of the road and where the grades fall off. We didn't change any of the grades, but we identified those areas, and where we didn't have enough room, we put a guide rail in. Those are the subtle, there was no lot line changes, there was no building movement. None of that changed, there was no utility changes. We tweaked the way we represented the parking. There was, I think, a little confusion about how we initially represented the parking, and we made some modifications to that. You know, I think the intent here is not to strike parking spaces along the roads, but to indicate where people could safely park, given the width of the road, and provide the necessary parking for guests, and the requirement, based on this number of units, is 41 or 42 parking spaces, and we've kind of shown where almost 80 cars could park along the streets, but way less than what we represented before, right? The discussion about driveways and those areas we've eliminated, that kind of parking. You also have to remember that these units all have two-car garages and room for two cars in the driveway, so meeting the parking requirement for this project was really pretty easy to do, there's 500-plus spaces when you account for all that. None of the stormwater changed. We did change the width of the sidewalk, we did eliminate a sidewalk on, I think it was lower mountain road, if you remember, we had sidewalks on both sides of the street, it couldn't, it didn't really seem to make a lot of sense, so we eliminated the one. But you will note that there's a walking path sidewalk along every stretch of the road, so you can walk through this. And there's really not much more to the changes than that, to be honest with you.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Chuck on, on this?
No. Susan, did you want to ask about the stairs?
Well, I'm assuming the stairs are still there, no?
Well, they are, but we'd rather they not be there. To be, to be quite direct about it, our hope is that the board would consider not requiring the stairs to go. Chuck, I'm gonna step on your toes here. To go from this sitting area down to that lower mountain lake road, which in, in theory would facilitate somebody walking to the Commons. And the reason that we would like to eliminate the stairs is because it's about a 70-step process to go from the bottom to the top. So we are concerned about a few things, a few obvious things. Number one, cost, we're never gonna stray, we understand things cost money, but we don't think they're reasonable and they're gonna get any reasonable use. Maybe people would walk down, I just don't see people walking up the steps. We're also concerned about in winter conditions, that the steps could provide a hazard, the association would be responsible to maintain them, but I just can't be certain that they're out there at all moments of time to make sure that ice hasn't formed or they're not slippery. We also had a kind of an aesthetic concern, that this is, this is a rock wall face for the most part, as you have this large grade change, and we didn't want to put the steps into or adjacent to the rock wall. Number one, for construction reasons, but number two, simply for aesthetics, that it's just such an incredibly beautiful vista coming up this road with the rock wall. So for those reasons, we would respectfully ask that the board allow us to not place those steps in here, understanding that people can still get to the Commons by walking through this sidewalk system, or of course, driving, and it just seemed like too large of a amount of steps to be practical from our perspective.
I would raise the argument that in addition to the winter, that could be a hazard any time of the year if it rains, it could be slippery if it rains, especially in the fall, they might have leaves on them, slippery leaves. And just let me assure in my own mind that there would be complete sidewalks from any place in West Terrace to the Commons, is that correct?
Chuck, that's correct, yeah.
So you could always stay on a sidewalk, and you still walk there.
Correct, you could walk or, or bike, or drive, whatever your pleasure is.
In that area, on one or both sides?
Remember, most of, so the other side's a driveway, for the most part, so what we did, we sidewalks where there are the least amount of driveways, like back and forth, but there's load on every stretch of the road.
So I'm probably outnumbered, but I think it should be there, and I think you can get around the bad weather and the danger piece by posting signage, but I think it's unlikely, more unlikely, that people are gonna walk the sidewalks all the way around into the Commons versus going down the stairs. And I think there is a precedent in other communities, so I, I, I feel it's something that should be, but that's, as I said, I think I'm outnumbered.
Well, I'll agree, you know, I mean, I think if the idea is that this is some kind of walkable community, it, it doesn't make sense to make people walk to the back end of the community to come all the way back down to the area where there's gonna be retail, it's needlessly long. You know, in terms of the, the safety or the steepness of the stairs, there, there are other ways to make stairs, you can do some switchbacks, you could put an angle on the hill, it doesn't have to go in a straight line.
Definitely would be switchbacks, but even with that, and I'm repeating myself, I apologize, you're still stuck with asking Mitch and his wife to walk up 70 steps, it will, it won't happen.
But there may be young families that, that like walking on, on stairs, I mean, there's, there's plenty of, you know, cities filled with stairs, and people love to take them, it's, it's not. I mean, there's, there's plenty of, you know, cities filled with stairs. People love to take them. It's, it's not an inconvenience.
I got a question relative to that. I don't recall the grade. The grade of the slope, right where the dog leg in the road is, opposite the Commons. If you go down the road, yeah, see the dog leg in the road?
Right there?
Yeah, right in that area. What is the slope like, opposite the dog leg?
I doubt I can tell.
Is it as steep as the other end where the, where the, uh, steps are being discussed?
Yes. I wanna say yes.
Okay.
Rock, rock face.
Correct.
Pardon me?
It's all rock face, yeah.
So this would be a hard read?
Yeah.
But. So if you can see the, the, the darker colors?
Yeah, yeah. Yes.
That's, that's the steeper. So although that color kind of varies through this swath, you still have that much grade change. I mean, literally, there is about sixty, I think Mitch was being kind as the number of steps. You know, basically, there's between sixty and sixty-five feet of grade change from this point to this point, which equates to a twelve-feet, uh, four- to five-story building. So switchbacks, absolutely. Lots of stairs, absolutely.
So really, the, the whole periphery of that road is a rock face.
Correct.
Is that what we're saying?
Yes. I mean, you might find areas where we'll grade, but for all intents and purposes, everything around here will have exposed rock in and out of it.
Thank you.
Chuck, what is the elevation change from the Commons to the extremity of the, both the single-family sections and the townhouse sections? We've got sixty-five to seventy feet just on that rock face. What is the rest of it?
I have some of those, I think.
How many are pros?
So. Through, so B, again, sixty-five feet. E to F, which is probably as close as I have, is, there's not that much differential. That's E. And then F going up, there's about forty-eight feet. So it kind of, kind of goes, um, I would say that. And here it's, here it's zero. And I'm approximating, sorry. You know, we, we rise to forty-eight. By the time you get up to here, we're sixty-five. And as you start getting further up to the top, it gets to be less again. So that, that differential between the grade as you go around the curve, you, this all, this, you'll be driving up and you'll be looking up to it as you come up. And then it'll start to level out as you get towards the top.
So just for some perspective. In Rome, the Spanish Steps are a hundred and thirty-five steps for anybody who's walked them. And people walk them up and down all the time, perhaps for different reasons. But in Santa Monica, there's a pretty well-known stair, um, that is, uh, a hundred and seventy steps. That's a very steep incline that people are, I mean, people who are athletic will run up and down these steps. And to get from one area to another. So seventy, eighty steps. I just personally, in this community, think it would be an asset.
It would really have to be designed as, as an element. It couldn't just be steps. It has to be a feature. To the all-in or all, or all-out.
And, and that might also be a concern, cause we're gonna be placing the steps in the wall. So they're not gonna be the typical concrete landings. We're not confident that it will be an aesthetic feature that we believe will complement the community nor a usual feature. We have a disagreement with a couple of board members and, and I'm not, I'm not here to continue to debate it. We all, we all have our opinions.
Hey, any other questions on this topic, just the steps? And why don't you, um, transition over to some of the architectural items?
So I wanna just, just focus on a couple of things. So just a reminder, the board, um, saw the full presentation of our homes at the first meeting. And then although we understand that the architectural guidelines create limitations on where the board can go with those, architectural features, the board nevertheless had some suggestions and we took those to heart. So I wanna focus on the suggested revisions that we made. And it falls into really, uh, two categories. Some minor design changes to the buildings that I'll show you in a minute. You'll remember. You saw it last time. Also, you had asked us if we could present, uh, better pictures and that, that you'll see. You also asked us on the single-family homes, can we see actual pictures of the ones you've built? And we said we built them in Titten Falls. There were some differences, but we'll get some pictures taken of those. We have those. We have another community also in central Jersey in Hopewell, where we are currently building these homes. And there's one that's almost done. So we put that picture in there too. See, you'll see that. So let's, um, you know, let's just start there. Just, so remember, there's thirty-one forty-foot wide, single-family homes. They range from twenty-four hundred to twenty-nine hundred square feet. And we're going to have, uh, three model types and each model type will have three elevations. And we talked about that at the last meeting. So what you asked us to do is to give you some real pictures of these homes that we've built. So the top three and the bottom two to the left are pictures of homes we built in Titten Falls, Monmouth County. Almost the same design. Some of the architectural features and colors are slightly different. You can tell these are relatively recent because there's some holiday decorations that, that were there when these were taken. Unfortunately, we didn't get a lot of sunny weather in central Jersey over the past couple of weeks. I don't think we've still seen the sun. And then the home in the bottom right is from our Hopewell community. And this is one of the same homes we'll be building here. This is the home we're building as a model in Hopewell. So it's mostly done, I think when I spoke to our construction team, they're another thirty days out from opening it up as an actual model and having, uh, home buyers come through it, uh, here in Hopewell. So if you did, if the board was inclined to say, hey, we'd like to take a road trip, uh, individually or happy to meet any of you there, uh, we could take a look at these in Titten Falls or take a walk through this one in Hopewell. So that was just to respond to, can't we see pictures of these? You keep showing us renderings. So I wanted to, to do that perspective. With regard to the other homes. So in the context of the two-story townhomes, there were two questions that came up. And this, of course, is a two-story townhome, as you can see from the front. So you had challenged us to add a little bit more diversity to the front of the townhome. And we created these shutters on several of the windows, just to add another little pop of color and another little, uh, design element. And then the back of these two-story townhomes, obviously are three stories when you look at them from the back, because these are the homes that, uh, back up to the Commons and as the grade falls off. So you had challenged us to see if we could do anything back here, uh, to, to help the, uh, the perspective. So what we did is two things. First, we wanted to show you that the decks that we have on the back of the homes do more than just serve as a deck. It also adds an actual architectural element that you couldn't see when we showed you in a two-D flat perspective. So we wanted to show you that, you'll see that. And then of course, as people put up chairs and umbrellas and all those other things, or other colors start to pop. And we also added these white bands across the, the first and second level. That's the bottom level's the basement. And then we added those white bands as they come down between the homes. So again, just to create another little small layer, layer of design and color, uh, sort of the back of the homes. To the extent you can really see them from the Commons, which I, I still could be a challenge. But to the extent we can, we wanted to show a little bit of change there to the front and the back. Then on the three-story. Three-story townhome, your concern was in the homes where there were four in a row, one, two, three, four. We kept the middle two homes the same. And the question was, wow, it looks like one big old condo building in the middle. And you were spot on. It did. So we, we appreciate you giving us an opportunity to add a deviation between the two home types so that you can clearly see or more clearly see that it is four separate, uh, townhomes. So those were the, the, the bulk of the design changes that we made. And there were no design changes that we made to the single-family homes, but to, um, give you a better picture. So that's why we'll just show the pictures there. Uh, the other change we made, and I'm gonna miss, I didn't do that, in the two-story townhome, so we go back and forth on you. Uh, we also thinned, how am I gonna say this? The driveways are a little thinner. They were, uh, twenty feet. We dropped them down to eighteen. And that allowed us to create these gaps between the driveways with a stone feature. So, uh, we think that helps differentiate the driveways and adds just another small element of color to the front homes. So those were the relatively minor, but I think helpful modifications that we had made, uh, based on your suggestions. And I, I do wanna offer that while we, we recognize and Kelly, we appreciate you, uh, providing guidance to the board, that the architectural guidelines, uh, create limitations on you, we are always willing to listen. And as we go through the next eight sections, is there nine total? As we do this eight more times, hang in there. We'll always keep an open mind that if there are things that we can do a little better, uh, that we didn't think of, we'll try to get there with you.
Does anybody on the board have any questions on the architectural elements? I know we, we reviewed it, uh, back in November initially, right?
Yeah, November and December.
December, we came back with these enhancements for the first time.
Just a couple of comments. So, I mean, I'd like to say, my comments, I don't believe are aesthetic in nature. They're more site plan-based and what I'm concerned about is the way that these houses function as a community. It's the way they'll, you know, encourage, uh, community and neighbors meeting each other, hanging out together, trick-or-treating. You know, holiday decoration, that kind of stuff. When, when I see a house that's all garage in the front, it's hard for me to envision how that really, um, you know, creates a lively and vibrant community. It's a, it's kind of a, a car-focused community. It, it doesn't encourage walkability. It doesn't encourage going over to your neighbor's front door. And, and that's my concern with it. I, I, I appreciate that you, you've made a couple of changes and, and I, I do think that the townhome i- is improved a bit. But I, you're just, for the record, I, I understand that we're, we're constrained on, on our, uh, authority over the aesthetics of, of the houses here. And, but that's not really my concern. I, I, I just wanna see houses that will, um, you know, build community and character and, and bring neighbors together, you know? And like, I hadn't seen this before, but the, is that the front door on the, on the side of the house there?
Yeah, in these two-story townhomes, the front door and the end unit is on the side.
Yeah, it's saying, it's not just recessed, but it's over on the side. I mean, that, that's, that's just kind of sad to see.
And, and we can disagree. From a home buyer's perspective, to be blunt, that's a home run, cause you have a nice private entrance point. We do expect most people, the focus of their entry in and out of their home will be the garage. They're gonna pull up and click their garage door opener and not necessarily use the front door. Uh, we, we will have a homeowner association that will have certain decoration guidelines. There'll be no pink flamingos permitted to, to exempt people like those. I apologize. But, uh, they will permit holiday decorations. Uh, we assume the homeowners association will also facilitate some, uh, community, uh, get-togethers and facilitate those, uh, Halloween opportunities and, and maybe put some guidelines in to set up trick-or-treating for the kids.
Just, what I, what I see here isn't consistent with this idea of a, a walkable, vibrant community where people are out on the street and walking down to the retail and, you know, they're kinda operating in that fashion. I see they're kind of almost the opposite of that.
And I, I, you know, we can't really explain how it's going to operate. We, we know that the, the homes are well-received and it does create a wonderful community to live in. If you focus your attention on the three-story, uh, please recall there's only, um, thirty-four of the two-story and there's, uh, seventy-two of the three-story. All those front doors are quite prominent. So if, if that, if that's what's lacking in the two-story, it's definitely more prominent in the three-story and they're all front-facing. And of course, the single-family homes have, have, have the variety. But in, in any event, all the front doors again are, are typical front-facing. Some have porches, which encourages some of those additional decorations. And we could debate whether these decorations are anything special or not, but I'm not gonna beat up some of the, the neighbors here. So I think we can, I think we're going to achieve what you're expressing. Even though I will admit in a two-D plan, uh, that doesn't have the gingerbread of what it's gonna look like down the road, it doesn't come through.
And so one other comment is, is another site plan aspect. But you, we, we still see all the homes in the site plan, all the single-family homes with the driveway on the same side of the house. So, um, but I understand that some, that's gonna be kind of decided during construction. That sometimes the garage will be on the other side.
Yeah, not necessarily. They're not, yeah, that, that's decided during construction, during what we call the plot plan phase. So as we morph from the approval and perfect that with, with your assistance. And then, uh, Adam goes in for a building permits. He'll be submitting plot plans to Deborah and Herb. That'll show the exact sign of the driveway, which will depend on the grade. So I can't tell you which is going to be a left or a right-hand garage, but there will be variations.
So Deborah, maybe you can help me understand, or Kelly. What is the official site plan that we're approving? If it's not the driveway locations and the house layout at this time?
So the site plan would be the driveway locations and the house layout. But when you're talking, I think, about the entrance on the side, that's more stylistic.
No, I'm, I'm talking about.
The garages.
The garages would be.
The site plan with the driveways.
What side of the house the garage is on?
Oh, it, it would need to comply with the design guidelines. So you have to take a look at the pictures, see if that complies. You do have limited, um, waiver capabilities, so we'd have to see if this would cross, if that would qualify as one of the waivers.
So, so like. So we, we do have some say over excessive uniformity, right? That is one of the tenants that we're reviewing here. So I, I see these houses and they're all the exact same house, the house, the driveway and garage on the left-hand side.
Well, on, on this, on the lower side of the road, it's, okay, I guess if I'm facing the house, these are all on the left and on the upper side. You're right. I do see that when you face the house, this one's on the right, but the majority are on the left, which are dictated primarily by the grades. There is also, just, I'm sure you noticed it, in the architectural guidelines, there's a look-alike clause. I call it a look-alike clause, which says that we can't have the homes, um, looking similar. And there's a, there's a formula for how many homes have to look different. So we will have to comply with that and your building department will judge our compliance.
Justin, we're not actually approving the site plan for West Terrace tonight. The only thing we can do tonight is authorize Kelly to prepare a resolution of approval, which we would take up at our next meeting. And, um, perhaps we can put in there a condition, a specific condition that the, um, the driveways are not all on the same side. And you guys can take a look at that. And if that's not a tremendous burden.
Well, let me let Chuck in the engineering perspective.
I guess it's one of the disadvantages of dealing with a, a two-dimensional picture. So there is a rationale behind how the driveways were laid out. And as the road goes, we laid out the driveways on the high side. And if you start putting driveways next to each other, you do a couple of things. You make that grading transition more complicated, potentially having to introduce a wall, cause now you put them closer together, right? And you reduce the green space between them. So yes, there's some uniformity to driveways being on the same side as you go, but it also creates the largest pieces of, of green space as you go. So putting them together, there are some engineering things that we considered when we laid this out. It wasn't just right, 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 right. It was how's the road working and what's the best side? It was how's the road working and what's the best side to put the driveway on? And how do we create the front, right, that has the most kind of easiest graded? Not easiest graded, but more kind of gentle graded that goes with it. As you start to put driveways on the same side, you start to create a bigger, more complicated grading solution.
Now that makes sense. Susan, you have any comments or questions on this?
No, I think I'm good, thank you. Especially having seen the area, it's helpful. So I'm good.
Bill, you have anything?
Just that the roads are still black, right?
Yes.
Did you ever take that drive and look?
We didn't, I did take the drive. I didn't come upon what you had suggested.
Every street in Tuxedo is what I suggested.
Okay.
Except 17 and the main drive.
No, I went off 17. In any event, so we did take, we did take a look at it and found that it's more of a top coat ceiling and wasn't, which adds costs. And so we were trying to avoid that for the private roads. With regard to the public roads, our goal is still to prepare them as a typical blacktop road and the town will eventually take ownership. And if the town wanted to put that coat on it as they did their first time of maintenance, they could do that. But it wasn't what we were going to do.
I think you're making a mistake.
I don't like that condition that all the driveways.
Square footage of black.
Must not be on the same side.
Well, I think we're not gonna.
I think it's just gonna be in there like the chairman suggested, really in bold italics for a little bit more discussion. Sometimes when you put the driveways next to each other, like the engineer discussed, there ends up being like a foot of a retaining wall just in between the driveways. And so it's something for the board to consider, but maybe think on it a little bit more and I'll make a note. That way there's further discussion to see if that's actually.
Did I hear that in the code, there's a formula to establish that or governing that?
Governing where the driveways are? No, just a preliminary plan.
It's got a formula of how often the same house appears.
Okay, so it's appearance rather than the position of the driveway. However, one effect could affect the other.
It could. If you go into most, you know, communities that are similar to this, you'll notice that there may be two of the same style house and then a couple of different ones before you get to the next style. And it goes towards that similarity and dissimilarity. So there was, that formula was in the smart code.
Anything else, Bill?
No.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to, for Kelly to prepare for our next meeting. And we'll get to when the next meeting is. A resolution to approve from a subdivision site plan and ARB perspective, the West Terrace. And it will be without the walkway as per that plan. Because it's not on that plan, correct?
Correct.
What is, what are we seeing there? Who's that? Are we that fine where the stairs are or not?
Ah, it's utilities.
So I think I'll call a roll on this one. Susan?
Do we get a second?
Oh, my motion's.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that. Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye. As long as we're not voting on the stair yet.
I'll vote aye.
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 Okay. So Kelly, prepare that resolution. Now, the applicant has requested, and I'm more than willing to grant for a special meeting in January. And we've taken a survey. And I believe that for most of us, not the board members, but consultant-wise, January 16th, two weeks from today, is that the date? Deborah?
I believe so. Valerie's not available that day, but everybody else is, yes, the 16th.
Now, from a board perspective, I'm okay with that, that day.
Susan?
I'm good.
Justin?
16th?
What does that call on, what day of the week?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Two weeks.
Two weeks from today.
I believe it's coming next year.
All right, good.
Yeah, I can make it, one week, two days later.
That's the day before.
That's on Monday. So you're okay?
Yeah, I'm getting my thingy adjusted a month later because of my.
I will not be here.
Bill?
Yeah, I can make it.
So that's five out of seven. I think we're all.
And I totally appreciate you trying to entertain that request for the special meeting. We had asked for that special meeting and thought an approval might get kicked out until March. If the board is authorizing staff to prepare or rather there's no commitment, I get this little discussion and vote for the next meeting, we could wait until early February. So again, I appreciate the gesture of trying to accommodate that request. But if we're not looking at a March consideration or a resolution, but rather February, we're perfectly fine coming back that first Tuesday in February.
All right, so then.
We'll put this in a cookie jar for future.
All right, well, forget about the special meeting.
Thank you.
We just talked.
Yeah, right. One day we'll have to push on that, but it doesn't have to be today.
Okay, all right, good. Okay, our final item then is Tuxedo Reserve and the Commons Quail Road. And we do have a draft resolution for site plan approval on that one. We've already approved the subdivision and the amended subdivision. That was done already. You want to give us a brief description of the Commons and Quail Road project?
Do you want any there?
Maybe.
Why did I ask? Well, tell me which board you're on, please. Tough guy.
We have a little blowout, we really didn't bring the full layout.
You kind of see it there. Yeah, no, that'll be my go-to, okay. So that's just lots.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna.
Well, if you want to start with that, that just shows the subdivision that was approved, just to kind of give a sequential context.
So in the, so the idea is to proceed with subdivision and site plan approval for Quail Road and the Commons. So why Quail Road and the Commons? Quail Road, of course, is quite important because that's our access road to get you to the Commons, that also gets you to West Terrace, so we need Quail Road. And then we wanted to get started with the Commons because as we've said and you've heard, that's at some point where we think the heart of the community lies. So you were kind enough to proceed with a subdivision approval, which created these various lots, which are necessary so that we can proceed with construction and financing in an orderly fashion. Now, the next part of that is.
Mitch, I was gonna interrupt. Not just building lots, but the subdivision also creates Quail Road as its own separate. Doesn't be relevant for what we're discussing.
Mitch, you mentioned subdivision, you have that.
We have that.
This is just like.
This is just a background context.
Correct. So site plan is.
Now, within those building lots, we show buildings.
Right, so within the building lots of the Commons, as you see at the bottom of this map, the site plan creates the identification of where the homes are gonna go. But what you haven't done and we haven't presented is the architectural review element of where the, where the homes will go in the Commons. So all you're seeing is kind of a footprint for where the buildings will go. So that's the site plan element of the approval. But we will have to come back to you for the architectural review of the Commons. And we are in communication, of course, with Related. And their focus is putting the architectural plans together, which they're doing. So we expect that we're submitting that to you late winter, early spring. And just want to also focus on the site plan element of the Commons does not include showing you building footprints for the recreational buildings. Remember, if you recall, there's two buildings that'll be focused on recreation. Buildings one and four, it doesn't matter what their numbers are. But one of them will be a more classic clubhouse, a recreation clubhouse for the community. And the other one will be what's called an events building that's called out special in the special permit. And that'll be a building approximately 4,000 square feet that Lennar will initially use for its marketing efforts, but eventually gets turned over to the community for the community to use and for the township to use. And we had some conversations early on with even the folks at the library that maybe they'll find some additional uses for it as part of an annex. So in my way of thinking, helps bring some library functions right to the middle of the site. So you're not, we're not asking for you to review the site plan element of the recreation building or the events building. We just wanted to tell you that they're out there. And when we submit for architectural review for the Commons, we will simultaneously submit for site plan for those two recreation elements as well as architectural review. So we're trying to marry how all those buildings work together. And so you'll see that as a later date. But for today, it's the site plan element of the Commons less the architectural element.
And as I remember it, Lennar is gonna do the site work, but Related's gonna build them.
Correct. Lennar, as the owner of the entire property, of the entire Tuxedo Reserve property, will do all the land development work, roads, utilities, et cetera. And in effect, and I'm greatly simplifying it, create the building pads for the buildings that Related will build. And then they will own them and lease them and however they work their magic. And it'll be just another beautiful element to the community.
All right, thanks Mitch. Let's go to our consultant reports on this.
So I did not follow report with you on this because I provided comments to Kelly on the resolution. You wanted to add a report at the last minute. So any remaining comments I had were provided directly to Kelly for the resolution.
Okay.
I did, so I coordinated with Kelly. I have two notes that the resolution's referring to. One deals with specifically landscaping and amendments that they need to make to their landscaping plan in order to meet the landscaping guidelines. And then the other one is still our outstanding comments on the site plan.
Thanks, Valerie. Kelly?
So I prepared for your draft resolution. There are several changes that I just want to review with you so that they're clear. I sent it out to you and it was again quite a long document, so please bear with me. And just so I can go over them. In the first paragraph, I did make a correction. So in the second sentence, it will now say, "The Commons and Quail Road portion of this project consists of 327 housing units, 1,220 square feet of amenity space, and 51,530 square feet of commercial space, together with certain site improvements shown on the drawings identified below." At this time, the applicant is not seeking site plan approval for Buildings 1 and 4. Actually, it should be 1, yeah, 1 and 4, and the maintenance building. So that's the other one that's not being included.
Yeah, I just, I apologize, Andy Brandt. There's a maintenance building that the developer is obligated to get to build for the town along Quail Road. So we haven't designed that, but there's a placeholder on this special permit. We'll get that to you another time.
Can I ask what that means exactly? So the building is shown on the plan, but they, in essence, aren't really there in this approval?
Yeah, it's kind of like a placeholder. And if you look at the actual buildings that are shown on the plans, it'll say, "Subject to a separate application or not part of this site plan approval." So it calls it out, but I also wanted to call it out here really for ease of the building department and for the board in case anybody missed it. I actually struggled finding the maintenance building myself. I had to call in reinforcements. Because I thought we discussed it not being there and I'm like, I lost the maintenance building where they. So that's why I put it out there.
There is a little bit of a potential issue. I just want to call to the board's attention. It's the applicant's issue, it's not your issue. The maintenance building require water and super service and the applicant's aware of this. The utilities to that maintenance building are not part of this site plan approval. So depending on how that gets developed, when it gets developed and when it gets built, they could conceivably, under this approval structure, go out, put in Quail Road and then have to trench a portion of Quail Road to run utilities to that building. I don't know if they, they're comfortable with that. You know, eventually they're gonna have to bring Quail Road up to town standards. It's gonna be a town road and it would be inspected, but it could be some duplicate work. Again, there's timing and other things involved. I just want to call that to your attention.
And the applicant's aware of it and we did make them aware of that as well. So I made some updates to the plans, just some typos and date changes that are listed throughout, up through page six. A couple of corrections in the procedural history. One, your public hearing was held June 29th, not in November. That public hearing was actually held prior to your second subdivision public hearing. The next big one is under findings. The finding that I had actually included in there in bold italics is not for this application. That is for West Terrace. So I do just want to confirm with the applicant that there are no waivers requested for the Commons slash Quail Road. Okay, so then that placeholder will be taken out and it will just be your regular site plan funding. Do you want me to go over the, all the conditions or just the changes to the conditions?
Why don't you go over the specific condition, the special condition?
Okay, so number one, this approval shall be subject to the special permit from the Town of Tuxedo Town Board dated November 22nd, 2022, as amended from time to time and to satisfaction of all applicable conditions that may be contained therein. Number two, this approval does not approve the construction of any housing units located outside the Commons and Quail Road. Number three, this is where we changed things up a little bit. Prior to the signing of the plans, the applicant shall, A, comply with the applicable comments contained in the memorandum of the town planner dated November 30th, 2023 and December 27th, 2023 to the satisfaction of the town planner. B, submit the plans to the town engineer for a final engineering review of the plans. The plans shall not be signed until receipt of a letter from the town engineer indicating that the plans submitted for signature are in proper order and in compliance with this resolution. C, offer to dedicate those portions of Quail Road and Bridle Trail Road that are proposed as public roads for highway purposes. Such documents shall be in a form acceptable to the town attorney. D, revise the plans to assign Brayburn Road and Wharton Road a classification shown on the road hierarchy plan. These are three new conditions that take the place of the bold italics. E, provide an all-way stop control at the intersection of Crooked River Pass and Quail Road pursuant to the memorandum from AKRS to Town of Tuxedo regarding Crooked River Pass and Quail Road intersection site distance dated November 7th, 2023. F, revise the plans to improve the driveway to the proposed office trailers at the intersection of Quail Road and New York State Route 17 and provide signage to the satisfaction of the town engineer. G, revise the water demand and wastewater generation and capacity calculations to the satisfaction of the town engineer. Number four, was in bold italics, but it no longer needs to be because I fixed what my issue was. So in accordance with Article 26 bonding of improvements of the 2022 special permit, prior to the issuance of any building permit and prior to the commencement of construction or disturbance of the project site, the applicant shall post a security in an amount acceptable to the town and in a form acceptable to the town attorney to secure the completion of all off-site and onsite public improvements and onsite common area improvements required in connection with the work conditionally approved by this resolution for the Commons and Quail Road and limited there too. Number five, it shall be the responsibility of the applicant to maintain the roadways, including removal of snow and ice until such time as the roadway is accepted by the town as a public road. Number six, in accordance with Article 23 of the 2022 special permit, prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy for residential unit, the applicant shall create the Tuxedo Farms Homeowners Association, although you might end up changing that to Tuxedo Reserve. All right, Tuxedo Reserve Homeowners Association. Number seven, this also has a couple of revisions. Prior to the issuance of any building permits for any structure, the applicant shall, A, provide proof of filing, the subdivision plat, with the Orange County Clerk's Office to the Building Department, accept that filing such plat shall not prevent or delay the construction of Quail Road. B, obtain Architectural Review Board approval for each such structure as required by the special permit, as amended, including but not limited to the housing units, amenity, civic and commercial structures and the wellhouses. C, provide all required easements, declarations and/or licenses to the town in a form for filing with the Orange County Clerk's Office, subject to the satisfaction of the planning board attorney, for example, snow storage, drainage, stormwater access, amenities, open space, conservation, et cetera. Number, that gets rid of one of the bold italics. Number eight, prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall provide a will serve letter from Orange and Rockland Utilities Incorporated. Number nine, prior to the issuance, prior to the issuance of the 20th certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall provide and install an emergency access road at Mountain Road. Such emergency access road shall comply with the New York State Fire Code. Number 10, the applicant shall comply with all mitigation measures outlined and set forth in the Town of Tuxedo Planning. in the Town of Tuxedo Planning Board Involved Agency finding statement dated January 12th, 2023. Number 11, blasting is not proposed as part of this site plan approval. Should blasting be required for development of Quail Road and/or the Commons, the blasting plan shown on the above listed plans, as amended by this resolution, shall be followed. See Article 10 of the special permit. Number 12 has a modification as well. In accordance with Article 6 of the 2022 special permit, the applicant shall offer to dedicate that portion of Quail Road and Bridle Trail that is within this portion of the project to the Town of Tuxedo. Such offer of dedication shall be filed with the Orange County Clerk's Office and proof of such filing shall be provided to the Building Department prior to the issuance of a building permit. Such dedication shall be subject to any and all easements and/or license agreements approved by the Town Board, including but not limited to water, sewer and stormwater. And lastly, in accordance with Article 3D of the 2022 special permit, non-residential uses shall be limited to those uses identified on smart code table number one.
Thank you, Kelly. Sorry, I made you.
No, there were, there were little tweaks here and there, so hopefully I pointed out, I pointed out the big ones, so I don't know.
I apologize, I missed the, the will serve letter. Originally it was a certificate of occupancy.
Yes.
Is that still the same?
That is still the same. It was the next one that kind of threw me and I missed a couple of words.
Isn't that a little late? Shouldn't that be before, before the building permit? And secondary question, is there any update on the O and R situations?
Yeah, so, I know I'm stealing Adam Sandler, but Adam's been in direct contact with O and R regarding electric and gas and they have assured him that there's a meeting coming up, should be next week. The holidays got in the way, I was actually with Adam when he had the call just before the holidays and they promised to get us a meeting right after the holidays. They called it a kickoff meeting, which we take to be very good news. They said in the call, and I can say this because I was on the call, they said in the call, there's, they have no concerns about providing gas or electric service. And then we said, well, great, could we have a will serve letter? And she said, oh, that has to go up the chain, down the chain. We'll get it to you as soon as we can. Hopefully we would have it for this meeting, just to get it off the table. But we're gonna press them for it at the meeting next week. That, listen, we may not need it from the developer's perspective, but the board has made it a condition of proceeding with getting a home completed. So we're going to push for it simply because we'd like to present it to you and show you that we've had the effective communications with them.
And then the natural gas is sort of a backup plan?
Well, in our perfect world, it's both, it's gas and electric. We're still balancing the costs to have an all-electric community with, which I think we talked about, with the problem of if it's all electric, then people can't have the classic generators hooked up to gas service. We're also balancing the cost of gas service. We do know that they're gonna need us to upgrade an eight inch to a 12 inch line offsite. So we're looking at those dollars to make sure it's an effective decision. So we're not ready, but, and I'll, I'll give the board credit again, at the board's nudging us to take a harder look at this quicker than we were, we have made some progress. So by the next meeting, I'll be happy to give you another update report.
Then there's the question of a substation, because that isn't shown, if it's needed.
If it's needed, right.
That isn't shown on any of the plans.
So it's trending, I'm gonna say surprisingly, because I'm with you, that it's, it's not in play yet, but we'll know more when we meet with them because we'll make sure, we can blame the board chair, but.
It's all his fault.
Was that inappropriate?
I'll talk to you later.
I, I crossed the line, I apologize. Thank you.
Okay. Questions from the board, Susan?
I have none.
Thank you. Justin?
Uh, no, not for me, thanks.
Bill?
Just a comment on the, on the gas. I think if you end up all electric, it'll be a huge mistake.
We're probably more with.
From the point of view of what happens if the power's out from many points of view.
We are with you.
I think the governor's making the same mistake, but you don't have to.
Thank you.
You need to put that part about the bucket on.
See what she says tomorrow.
Well, then don't put the part where I was, was making John the bad guy.
I didn't even hear you.
These minutes are shaping up, good.
Susan?
No.
Yeah, regarding O and R, when you meet with them, presumably they're gonna be under the impression that you're looking at all electric.
Well, no, the conversations have been, we're looking to do both if possible.
Do both, or you'd be heating with both gas and electric?
No, 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 heating with gas, but the rest of the home would be electric.
Oh, I see, cooking that would be.
Cooking could go either way, you know, as, as my limited experience with talking to cooks, some prefer gas, some, some like the, be able to control things with the electric, no.
That's not really accurate, okay.
But the heating would be.
Cooked up, yes. Ovens can be electric, it's not a problem, but it's really cook, which I really do.
You want gas up top?
Yes.
Bill, Bill, continue with your.
Yeah, but the, the heating would be gas, not electric.
That, that's our preference, because we're also balancing the cost of a heat pump or, or other system if it's electric versus the cost of and feasibility of bringing gas in. But our, we would like to trend towards exactly what you are suggesting, which is a combination with gas heat and gas service for perhaps the dryer and the, and the cooking elements.
So that'll be the assumption, O and R will go on when they give you, when they give you input as to what they can support?
Yeah, that's where we'd like to drive it, if it can get there. And that's part of the reason why we need a kickoff meeting, as they're calling it. Just to focus them, what can they do to service our community? And does it create substations, does it create upgrading pipes? How much does that cost? And then we'll have a better feel. But we do want to make the right decision selfishly for the market, marketing and sales of the homes. That, that's gonna drive our decision-making. And it feels like the board is on that same boat because you're thinking of the home buyers also.
So at this point, you did not run, or Related did not run gas lines through the community?
Not through the community, no.
Okay, there's nothing else, I'll make a motion to approve the draft resolution, site plan approval. And keep in mind that we still have to approve and review and approve the ARB, which we haven't seen anything on that yet.
Correct, yeah, the only real substantive work that this site plan approval would, would allow is the construction program. That, that, we don't need to come back to you all, any vertical construction requires the ARB.
So can I have a second?
I'll say.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, I believe that's it for, oh, before you go, three of us toured the site with Adam a couple of weeks ago. So only three, Kelly, so.
Thanks.
You can have a forum. And it was very, it was very helpful.
That was great.
It really gave you a perspective of where things are. So I would encourage the other board members to give us some dates, when you could make it. And Adam, hopefully you could accommodate. Again, it would have to be two because it can't be two trips, it can't be four together. So I really encourage that you should try to do that. And with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second?
Favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks to everybody.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you.